2:40 PM, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Ottawa City Commission Study Session. We'll start with public comments, do we have any?
Any.
Thank you. I'll move us on to items to be placed on the regular City Commission Agenda, which includes our minutes from our August 29th Study Session, our September 7th Regular Meeting. Commissioners, we're going to strike the September 12th because there's a correction that needs to be made. And then a proclamation recognizing September 17th through the 23rd, 2022 as Constitution Week. Did y'all have a chance to look at that? And if so, are there any corrections? And if not, are we okay with moving those on?
Are we adding this too? Or are we doing this today?
Will we adding this? Yeah. Do you want to add this? We can add it. We'll also include a proclamation for National Hispanic Heritage Month. Thank you, Commissioner Kayler. Anything else? So we're okay with moving that on to our agenda? Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to items for presentation and discussion. Item one is a presentation of new online burial search for cemeteries. DJ Welch will give us that presentation. Good afternoon, DJ.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. You want me to come over there and do that? Can I man the computer?
What do you want to show?
Well, then you're not going to be on camera.
Oh, no.
Everybody loves that part.
So first off, I just wanted to introduce this new system that we got for you guys. For a couple of years now, we've been talking about giving public access to be able to look folks up that are buried in our cemeteries. So it's been a long process. We thought we were going to have to create something, but come to find out that the cemetery system that we actually have has a portion of this that we just were not aware about. So after a lot of discussion with them and providing them with some information, we finally were able to get this thing going live. So now what that means for us is that anybody within the public that has access to Internet can get on and look up any occupants in the cemeteries, any of our cemeteries. So if we look at, it's on our website, ottawakas.gov. You're already in the page. So on the very front screen of ottawakas.gov, on the very bottom of it, down here, there's online burial search. So we'll click on that, and that'll bring up this screen here. And then it's very basic from here. So it's almost like the less information that you can give, the better search that you're going to get. So if you just want to type in a last name, so if you have a last name that you can type in there. Anything?
Anderson Smith.
There you go.
Anderson Smith.
And then we'll just click search, and that's going to bring up every Anderson in all of our cemeteries. So if you're looking for somebody specific, which I'm certain that you probably are, we will just click on, see, this one shows six full pages of Andersons. So just click on Abraham up there. So we're looking at Abraham Anderson here. So it's going to give you just some basic information that we have. So it's going to tell us, first off, over here in the top right, it's going to sell us the cemetery that it's located in, which is Highland Cemetery. And he is located in Block 32, Lot 18, Space Number 7. So some of the information we don't have on Abraham, it's like his year of birth, obviously, and some of this other stuff. Obviously, the more of that information we have, the more information will be put in there. So down here on the right where it says, "Do you know more about this person or their ancestors?" We can click here. If you have more information that you don't see there, you can click on that, fill this out for us. And then at the bottom of this page, you'll be able to submit that, and that will send us an email saying that this is the information that you know about this specific person, and we would be able to go through and enter that back into the system. So that way, the next person in line would be able to come back and read all that information. All right, go back there. Yep, and then it goes down through the genealogical information, and all of this information will be some of that stuff that you'd be able to enter in. This one, we don't have any information on. Go back up, if you would, and let's research somebody that does have some information, just so we can see. Look up McCurdy. So go down to... Right here, this is my grandfather. So Robert McCurdy here, and it'll have some of his information, just to be able to show. So if we scroll down some... So this is what you would see after that information gets entered in. This is, you know, his children, his spouse, his siblings, so on and so forth. So pretty good information.
Is there a map somewhere?
There is.
That lot and all that, how do you even...
There is. So if we scroll back up to the top here, so right up there it says, "Locate on map." Click on that one. It's going to bring up a map of Highland Cemetery, and then it shows right down here. It's just going to give you the general area of where it is buried at. You can print this map off. We haven't really figured out a good system, because it prints an actual size. So it's going to be best to enlarge it before you print it, or is it going to print out about a three-by-three map? So make sure that you're enlarging that prior to printing it. This is also available, it's the exact same system that you can find on your mobile phone, And that's really it in a nutshell. Super excited about it. We have a lot of people that come out and ask for help trying to find someone, so hopefully this will, we'll get this word out there, and people will be able to look them up.
Awesome.
It's a great service.
That's all I got.
Thank you.
I think it's extremely wonderful to be able to add information. You know, it's probably all new now, but once you, you know, read it a year or two, there's probably going to be a lot of information in there that wasn't here now, and certainly valuable. That's wonderful.
Yep. We're excited about it.
Yeah.
And it's live now.
It is live. The only thing that we do not have updated as of yet is the map of Rosemont Cemetery, but we are working on that as we speak, so everything else is good.
Good one. And do other cities have this, or is this something...
There, yes, other cities do have it, and we actually talked to a couple of them prior to purchasing this, so.
It's actually a pretty common, it is real beneficial to genealogists and people who are searching. It actually is a pretty common software all across the United States. You'd actually go look up virtually anybody you want to. And some of them are more sophisticated than others, and we'll get there. You can actually put pictures of the site, you could, if you have a picture of the relief, you can post a picture of the relief on there.
Yep. There are some very sophisticated versions of this. This is kind of the entry level. That's where we needed to start.
Thank you, DJ. We appreciate it. Tell your team, thanks for the hard work.
Absolutely.
Wonderful thing to be able to use now.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that'll move us on to item two, which is our continued review of an ordinance authorizing storm sewer improvements with Tyler Ellsworth from Kootai Rock. Tyler, are you there?
Yes, I am. Good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon, Commissioners. As you mentioned, this item, item three, I'm sorry, item two through four here are all continuations of items that we started last week. And so I'm happy to either pick up where we left off with each one of these, or defer to Ms. Landis, who I think has a presentation specific item three, the resolution regarding the public building improvements, whatever, whatever the best way to handle this is.
Commissioners, do you need any more information about, outside of what we received last week on item two? You want to give us the information you have on item three?
Sure. So when we've been discussing this item, it felt like we needed to maybe give you a little more information. And so what I did here is provide a list, and then we actually have an alternate piece of this we wanted to discuss with you. So a little bit of background. So during our budget presentation this year, we identified that we had multiple facility improvement projects. And in order to accomplish those, it was going to take cash in some situations set aside over multiple years in order to be able to accomplish them. So for example, one project is $560,000. We were going to reserve $113,000 or $15,000 every year for five years and eventually be able to do the project. Some of the other projects, we didn't even bring to you for a budget request, because for an HVAC system for City Hall, it's a million dollars. We need that sooner than 10 years from now in order to, you know, reserve that kind of cash. And when you put them all together into a bundle, that's a lot of cash over five or 10 years that you have to set aside, and no project's getting done in the meantime. So what we decided was a good option for you and opportunity at that time is to be able to use the capacity in our debt service fund to be able to bundle these projects together, make them public building improvements, and then be able to make those payments over the next 10 years. So effectively using the cash from five years, spreading it out over 10 years, to be able to get these projects done sooner. The pros of doing that is that we can accomplish a lot of projects sooner rather than later. But the cons of doing that are that it's, one, not something that we're used to doing here. So it is, it does provide a little bit of, a lot more discussion, a lot more working through a bigger process. It is, we do have to rely on cost estimates instead of bids, whereas normally, you might say, you might bid a project, then have temporary notes issued, then construct the project, and then have a final cost and go out to bond. In this case, we're skipping those first steps, one through three, going straight to bonding the projects, which puts you in a position of, we may or may not have money to do all of the projects that we're anticipating, but we do feel like we have some pretty decent cost estimates here. We just don't have control over the economy and construction costs and/or pricing of some of those units that we may need to replace. So we have included in there some contingency dollars, of course, so we can make sure that we might have enough. We also, your city manager and I sat down and went through the list of projects last week and identified how we might kind of prioritize those, and starting with, okay, cash is available, or money would be available for this project, we'll bid this one, see where we land, see what's available for project two, see where we land, and then continue down the list. So if we could go to the next slide. This is what we've presented to you so far. It's just in summary form. It's the seating replacement we've talked about at the OMA. We've talked about the flood mitigation improvements at the Law Enforcement Center. We've talked about HVAC improvement and replacement for City Hall, the commission room renovation, and second floor security improvements. And then that contingency number is because some of these estimates were, you know, a year ago, 18 months ago. Some of them were as early as last week or last month. So by including that, we can be sure that we'll be able to accomplish most of those projects, at least hopefully all of those projects. The estimated annual debt service for this would be about $260,000.
Do you know how much we're paying off on the, on the property tax portion of bonded interest each year? Just...
Let me see if I have that. I don't have the schedule, but out of... Out of 3.9 million in debt, we ha, it's supported by about $430,000 in taxes between, not just property tax, but vehicle, motor vehicle, commercial...
Okay, but that's, that does include any transfers from the utilities? That's strictly property tax?
That's strictly property tax. So that's all the debt that's funded, is about $430,000 by other taxes. Everything else is supported from other funds, transfers in.
Thank you.
Yes. So is everybody comfortable with the first set of information we brought to you?
One time we're talking about the carpeting at OMA, that would be the one, they work in concert with each other, like we were talking about the seat replacement, where would that fit in?
So, great question, at least, into my next slide. So we actually continued that conversation a little further, and we said, okay, because this is an opportunity to do even more, you know, improvements in general, are there more improvements at the OMA that really need to be done? And how can we go about doing that? And, you know, what are those things? And so Tiffany was able to put together for us a list of what those items might be, and then we reviewed those this morning, and we put together a second slide for you here, where the top is what we just talked about. So the very top section is what we just talked about. The additional expenses that we might want to consider here is the replacement of the carpeting and baseboards. Along with that, actually, just get down to taking the orchestra pit and demoing that, lifting it, and leveling the floors, so that you could have alternate seating options or use it for different capacities for different types of events. The concession stand rebuild, which would be basically not just renovating what's there, but actually improving that structure in that area. And then replacement of the boiler system. We actually had a longer list of items, but we decided that those might be like maybe a next phase, and that would be improvements to the basement, which would include the kitchen and the bathroom remodel in the basement, and the chairlift, which we decided would be worth exploring grant opportunities to make sure, see if we could get those two things accomplished at the same time. Other things that need to be done is just painting throughout to match all of the paint throughout the whole facility, repairing the wall cracks, those types of things. And the estimate there is about $75,000 for that, and we decided that we could do that within the budget over time, and it would, that's not something you would consider for a bond issue type of activity. So those extra improvements is about $410,000 based on estimates that was, that were pulled together in the last week or so. And so the new total then would be about $2.6 million, and then our estimated annual debt service would be about $300,000.
Do you want to calculate the estimated debt service?
Dave, could you tell us what interest rate we used as an estimate?
Yeah, just a second, let me pull that up. I think we used about 3%. Yeah, it was, the latest rate we've used that generates those numbers is about 3.05%. And that's reflective of today's market.
So the purpose of bringing all of this to you now, of course, is that we're moving ahead with the bond issue, our sale date is coming up in October. We'll have a rating call on the 29th of this month, and we need to make sure that we have, that these documents that you're about to consider for approval on Wednesday's meeting include the things that you want to have accomplished. So we're really just asking for your feedback today. We can either bring back to you exactly what we've brought to you on Wednesday for your consideration, or we can change those numbers and include any of these additional items or none of them, whatever your preference is, and for your consideration.
Make sure there's any comments?
I wonder about the contingency amount of $94,000. If that contingency is not utilized, do you have additional projects that you've identified that you would utilize those funds for?
There are other things that we could probably use them for, and I think it's how we, however we set that up. So for instance, we had, there's an additional HVAC unit at OMA that needs to be replaced. There was, how's my other list? But there's an other list of things. So that's a great point. We probably should include those in the description to make sure that those things can get done. Yes, I don't actually have that list with me, but that's a great point.
Well, I guess I was thinking, and I know that we've all been at OMA, but I mean, like the orchestra pit and demo and floor leveling, I'm like, that's half the contingency fund. It's like, could we put that in? See, if it's not, I mean, I guess I was trying to figure out how to modify it a little bit. And it doesn't have to be done, I just was trying to figure out, what were you going to utilize the contingency funds if it was not?
You generally use a contingency fund if you have an overrun engineering cost, heaven forbid, or if you have an overrun in construction cost. That's generally what the contingency fund is for. But it, but, but in a unique way, when you do a bond issue like this, you kind of have that hanging out there, and the first thing that would be used is to cover any construct, like you might, in, for instance, if we do the law enforcement building down there, we're probably going to tear into something that we don't know about, that you're going to need extra money for, and that's what a contingency would be used for.
Is that kind of an industry average, go 4%? Or is that...
No.
Actually, I hate to even tell you this, I like to use 10 to 15% for a contingency number.
Yeah. And I'll say, I got that number because I had included some, I had in, on my original list, rounded up some of these items, because I knew that they're for a variety of reasons. So for example, for example, the flood mitigation improvements at the Law Enforcement Center. The S, or the, the construction estimate that we got back was 12 to 18 months old, and it had at the time, it was about $480,000 plus some additional things. And then, but their five-year increase or percentage increase brought it to the 565. Well, we put the 565 in here, but the reality is, once you get into that project, you likely are going to have more things you get into that project. So, so I mean, that could eat up easily half of that contingency right there. Go ahead.
No, it's not wrong to use that number. I like to use a higher number, just because something always happens. When you're tearing out stuff and you're redoing it, something always, think about your home remodeling project.
That's why it's like, when we finance new home construction, we add about 10% contingency, just because materials are going higher. Exactly, I know more about that. Normally, it isn't fully tapped, but there are a lot of times it is.
And the HVAC report that we have is at least a year, about a year old, maybe two years old. So we don't know exactly what the cost of each of those components is going to be to replace. We may have to pare that down once we get an actual bid and what we're going to do, so.
For the carpet and baseboards, is that an actual estimate, or was that just our estimate? The $75,000?
It was an estimate we added in, just an additional, a little bit additional for flooring repair, just because we don't know what's underneath the carpet.
Do we have a way of knowing? I guess my question is, if we have a way of knowing what it would be if we chose to do it at a different time? Like, I'm assuming it would be more expensive if we didn't do it at the same time as the...
As the chairs, yeah. And that estimate is for carpet for the entire building? So that's stairways, the lobby, dressing rooms? So we could narrow it down to where we just do the auditorium carpeting? But it, I mean, it does make sense to do while the chairs are happening.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I figured it'd probably be much more expensive if we had them working around a whole bunch of seats, so, okay. Thank you.
I like the idea we're working with OMA. I think you're doing a great job of bringing shows and bringing people and looking at the numbers we see every month, and so it makes sense to put money into a facility that's growing and look for activities. I like that idea.
Well, I certainly, as Commissioner Graves was just talking about, I would certainly like to include the carpet and baseboards, for sure, just because at this point, we're redoing the seats, we might as well redo the carpet at a cheaper rate at this point. So I would like to include that. Now, I know we've talked about ARPA funds, and is that something we could use maybe for the commission room renovation? And then instead, input concession stand and orchestra pit to offset that 160 from the ARPA funds for the commission?
We can do that.
I mean, because then we're, we're pretty much including, you know, this list of OMA outside of the boiler system. And I know that's something you've mentioned, you know, there's other things that might come up that we can do down the road, but at least that would take care of three, four, so those, those requests right there.
I think that's a good plan, to use ARPA funds on a renovation, because it's still a moving target.
I would be in favor of that. I don't, Commissioners, how do you feel? Do you have any input?
I would agree. I assume you're going to carpet over the level, so it makes sense to do that before. So if you carpet it once, you don't have to come back in time. Kind of the same thing as the seats. Would make sense.
Fix that orchestra pit and then carpet it.
And knowing how many different types of carpet there are in that building, I would be in favor of doing it all at once, so it's all the same carpet.
Most of it is not pleasant.
Quite a variety, in purple. Do you anticipate adding seats when you level or possibly?
So if we, if we did the concession stand rebuild as we configured it, it would eliminate some seats. Bringing up the floor from the orchestra pit would allow us to do some portable seating, whether it's pulled-out chairs, dinner theater-style seating, you know, there are a lot of different uses, but we'd like to keep the capacity about the same as it is now.
I certainly am sorry that we're springing this on you at the last minute, but we definitely wanted to make sure that we took the opportunity to discuss it, and we didn't want to get down the road later and say, we wish we would have at least talked about it, so.
I still would like a list of what we would utilize contingency funds for if it was not found somewhere in construction projects, just so the public knows that we just didn't build an extra $100,000 in there, and we bonded it out, and we're paying it out for 10 years. We actually have a plan for it, regardless of it's used as contingency funds or it's used as another project.
Sure. So we would need to identify that in our description for this, this resolution. And if, if that project doesn't fall within that description, then those, any of those extra dollars have to go back to your debt service fund to pay off your debt payments. So if, for some reason, we did end up with a lot of extra money, we won't end up with a lot, but if there's some, we, we would, that's another opportunity, is to move that back to the debt service fund and reduce those payments for the next year. So we could, we could try and come up with that. The other thing that we could do is, if we're going to take, we could include, say, the commission room renovation, if we know that there's going to be extra dollars, we could put the money towards that and not use the ARPA funds for it. But if there's not extra dollars, then we could just move it out and do it under the ARPA fund. Same with the security improvements for the second floor. We could do those, do you see what I'm saying? So if, if we get through the first couple of projects and we're like, there's, there's more money left than what we thought there was going to be, we could leave them in there, but not necessarily intend to do those projects right away, and only do them if there's funds available. If there's not, then we would move them over to something like ARPA funds.
Well, I appreciate what Commissioner Kayler's asking for, that list, and I would rather those contingency dollars be used for that list than the commission chambers. So I mean, if we could, just my opinion, if we can, you know, pretty much focus hard on that, and then those extra, if there are contingency monies, put it towards the list that Commissioner Kayler's asking for.
Okay. Sure, sure.
I would agree. I would think, like, the boiler system replacement, if that doesn't go in, make sure that's in as a contingency, because if there are funds available like that, I would rather, like you said, I would rather spend money on that. And I would assume that system will save money over the current system in place annually.
And if we wrote the description correctly, you know, we could even use it towards the bathroom remodel in the basement of OMA. We could use it towards the kitchen, doing either a portion or all of either one of those two things. I know that that wasn't necessarily in our list, but if we wrote it in the right manner, you could use it for, you know, other improvements there, or if there's other improvements in City Hall, but I don't have my full list here for...
So the other part of this, you have to understand, our citizens ought to understand, is, once we get into this and we actually take bids, those bids might actually be higher for those projects, and there may be projects we leave on the table and all that kind of gets collapsed.
And on that extra, like the additional chairlift, the basement's not handicap accessible at this time, correct?
Correct. We have an outside ramp, but there's no way inside that's accessible.
And our estimate for that chairlift is $22,000.
And like you said with that list, I think, especially $22,000, that could be something that we throw in the list, if it can happen.
Commissioners, any other questions, comments? How would you like to move forward?
Quick question, Dave and Tyler, have they seen other contingency fees, 4% in the ballpark, or what have you seen around the area?
Hear my question, Dave? Tyler?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I did.
Okay.
No, no, 4% contingency is something that's definitely a reasonable number. I likewise have seen figures of approaching 10% on projects like this.
So are you ready to see this on Wednesday, or what would you need?
Right now, what I heard was that you would like to move some things around, but largely keep it where... but largely keep it where we had it before, at the two-point-two-five million. With the addition of, we're going to take out the commission room renovation and instead add back in the orchestra pit demo and floor leveling and carpet and baseboards. And then the one thing I'm still fuzzy on is the concession stand rebuild. Are you in favor of putting that in, or was that something we're holding aside?
Well, I would be in favor. Like I said, removing the commission room is a hundred and sixty thousand. If we put back in the concession stand rebuild and the orchestra pit demo, that's a hundred and sixty thousand. So it kind of offsets that cost back to where we were originally in that number.
If we were to add all the additional projects that are considered under OMA and remove the commission room renovation, we're at two-point-five, straight up. And I actually would feel comfortable with that. I mean, the reality of it is, the boiler breaks. We aren't having anything at OMA. There's, nobody's coming to OMA in February if there's not heat. They're just not.
Unless it's ice skating.
There you go, thanks for, yeah, thanks for pointing that out. And I will invite you first to come out and do that.
We have those on ice shows.
Yesterday, but I think the boiler is important. It's not a sexy project. Nobody really gets excited to talk about, let's replace the boiler. However, everyone notices when the heat is not on.
That's true. And we think, Tiffany had mentioned to me earlier that that boiler replacement project will actually, should help to reduce our electricity costs.
I guess the boiler hell isn't, you know?
I don't know how old it is. It would actually be taking the current boiler, which is a steam boiler, and replacing it with two smaller hot water units. So that if one unit was down, we still had that backup unit running.
The pipes aren't frozen?
There are a lot more energy-efficient boilers you can put in. My guess is that if that wasn't replaced in the last renovation, which was forty years ago, it's older, it's at least as old as that, if not older.
They don't turn over on the main block.
I don't like boilers.
It's not quite a big problem.
How old does?
Sixty.
I would be in favor of Commissioner Kayler's suggestion of just removing the commission renovation and just making it even two-point-five.
I think so.
Fantastic.
And just for the public's sake, I moved on to item three, but I didn't actually describe it. What we were talking about was continuing review of the ordinance, sorry, resolution authorizing public building improvements, so. Commissioners, are we good on item three then? Item four is a continuing review of resolution authorizing the public sale of approximately four-point-nine-nine million and general obligation refunding and improvement bond series twenty-twenty-two A.
Mayor, can I ask David a question, please? David, last week, we struggled with what this savings, so to speak, ceiling ought to be. Where do you think we ought to be with that? What's the right number?
You know, the, I think when we spoke last time, excuse me to say, I think when we spoke last time, I was estimating the savings was about forty-two thousand dollars. And the commission decided that it was worth proceeding as long as the savings was about twenty thousand. I thought that was a pretty reasonable answer to give. I was initially thinking, well, you know, thirty thousand would be a decent target. That, if you look at savings on a present value basis, that, that sort of met the stand, industry standard for present value savings in relationship to issue size. Subsequent to that, interest rates went up, and now the savings is somewhere around thirty-five thousand dollars. So I'm a little concerned, I'm sort of rethinking my initial thought about a thirty thousand dollar threshold, just because we lost, you know, six thousand, seven thousand dollars of savings in one week last week. So I guess what I'm saying is that twenty thousand dollar number seems to me to be a pretty reasonable figure. The other thing that is coming into play here is the fact that, you know, the old bonds become callable on October one of this year. So if we don't refinance them now, we begin, even if interest rates stay the same, we begin to lose savings when we move past the call date. I'm just a little bit concerned that, once we get past this call date, unless interest rates drop dramatically, pretty quickly, we might just never have an opportunity to refinance it.
Okay.
Tyler, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, no, I think I'm in agreement with what Dave already provided. And I think feeding with the twenty thousand, twenty thousand dollar minimum savings target makes sense from that perspective.
And Mayor, I might just add that by changing number three, item three, it will also change item four. So we'll put both of those updated documents in your agenda packet for Wednesday, then.
Commissioners, do you have any questions on item four?
Just one more question, Tiffany. So in the concession renovation, what will our new concession stand look like, how different?
Sure, it'll be expanded. We're taking out three rows in the back of the auditorium. It will expand out a little bit. There will be a window that actually will open into the auditorium, so that people can make those purchases on both sides. I will mention that the friends at the OMA are going to purchase all new equipment for the concession stand, but it will give us more storage space. If you're in there right now, only about two people can be in there, max, at a time. She told me we could also get a nacho fountain.
Is that on the contingency? Commissioners, are you okay with moving two, three, items two, three, and four on to Wednesday's agenda?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler, thank you, David.
Thank you.
That moves us on to item five, which are his comments by our city manager.
So I have three items myself, and then I'm going to turn it over to Director Hall for a short update on the MIH process. Regarding autogolf course, city attorney is working on closing on that, so that we can get our ownership perfected. The grant's been submitted. If we are successful in being funded, it will pay for fifty percent of the purchase price. The purchase price is two-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand, so it would be half of that. Also, internally, I've put together a little working group. We're going to actually sit down, define what our next steps are, define who people are we need to be talking to and bringing into the group. And along the way, we'll likely, once we get the ownership of the course, the city attorney and I will likely be having some more conversations just with the, with the leasing company that is operating the course. Just kind of look down the road and see where we want to be and how we want to be. But I think it's important for our community to know, and I think it's important for you to know, I was out on the course again Sunday morning. The course looks good. I've played on some courses in the last week that don't look so good. There's a number of reasons for that, but what I do appreciate is that the operator of the course is keeping the greens in good condition and the fairway in good condition. And that is hard to do in the weather that we have. And when you start to lose your greens, you start to lose business, so. I just thought it's important to know that. And there was a, there was a good group out there using it Sunday morning, too. So next steps regarding the splash pad is that in, we're going to have a little, next couple of weeks, another conversation with Casey, really kind of talk about the public portion of this, and have Casey develop a plan and bring that back to you, so you can be talking about that, and kind of what you need to look at to decide what kind of splash pad you want, so you can get that process kicked off and going. And then regarding a pool placement, I don't think it's any big secret that within the next couple of years, you need to replace the swimming pool. So I'm going to leave this with you today, and we can, and we'll put it back on the agenda for tomorrow. And what this is, is it, not tomorrow, no, we're not doing this tomorrow. Can't take three meetings in one room. There you go. But I'll put this on next Monday's agenda. And what this is, is a draft request for proposals for a swimming pool, water park planning and design. And as you read this, what this has in there is things that, that this entity's going to help you with, to actually take you through public participation, take you through that, help you do that. But I want you to take a look at it and be familiar with it. And it won't be tomorrow, but I'll put it on the agenda for next Monday, so that we can discuss it. But this is really your first step. Well, your first step was actually setting money aside next year's budget to start this process. And it, I think, when you're talking to the public, this is at least a two-year project. And Mr. Hall?
Okay. I'm going to pass a couple of things out. So you remember, last week, you selected projects to include in the modern home housing grant application? Is it one brand or one? Yes. There's three on your side, and two on this side. And so there are a couple additional steps. One is to, is for the commission to adopt a resolution supporting the application. And that includes a capacity statement, and that's what this is, is a draft resolution. The other important step is for our consultant to complete the application itself, and that includes letters of support. And we're making a lot of progress on that front, with the help of Mr. Bean back here in the corner. So we've gotten some pretty good letters of support. Got a few details to work out on the application, just details, moving parts, if you will. And, and so what we expect is that this will be on the agenda on Wednesday for you to adopt. It's pretty close to being in final form, the suggestion I got this afternoon is maybe add a whereas paragraph, extolling the virtues of the projects that we're selecting. We've got more than what we've done. And then on Wednesday, not Wednesday, next Monday, day, next Monday, we expect to have an application, pretty much.
So we will have an application for that next Monday.
Yeah, we will. And you'll be able to see that. So that's where we're at, and so we're making, we're making progress.
Mike has spent a lot of time on this with help from a lot of people. He and Susan, this is consumed likes time up there, as it should. So for the first time out of the chute, gaining some valuable experience when we get into other rounds down the road.
Yeah, I think we're in the, you know, housing promotion business.
Good to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it, Mayor.
That moves us on to comments by our city commissioners. Commissioner Graves?
We probably all have, I'm guessing, similar comments, but we had a great car show, and I just wanted to thank all the first responders that I saw out there walking around, from EMS to police, sheriffs, and firefighters, making sure everyone was safe and having a good time. So I just appreciate them being there, being visible, and prepared to handle any situation.
The Friday night band was awesome. I mean, I don't know if we're going to bring that up, but I mean, it was really well attended. Tiffany, any idea about how many people were there?
I don't, and I have heard that everybody say that they thought it was a bigger crowd than usual, and a very active crowd. I heard there was quite a bit of dancing there, so that's what we liked to hear.
Yeah, so, this was good.
Commissioner Clayton?
Yeah, I was with Commissioner Graves with the car show. And it's always nice in the fall, in September, seeing the town so busy for two weekends in a row, between the two, two busy weekends, and it was a, seemed to be a very safe weekend. I haven't talked to any EMS folks, but didn't see anything kind of happen at a cruise night or down at Forest Park. So with the heat, that's always good.
Mayor, for a turn, excuse me?
Same comments, and a lot of, just their streets look great. I think the parks were on the road nicely, trash picked up. Just the place looked spectacular, so, yeah, we're all involved in that, too. Just pass that on. As far as any issues, were there any?
We had one incident during the cruise night involving some local teenagers, and that was it.
My goodness, that's good, so, kudos to everybody. We'll see the sales tax numbers next month.
And you have one more event, I think, this next weekend with Mike.
I repeat what everybody has said about the car show. I think it was a great time. A little worried about the weather, but it held off, so that was good. And I also want to publicly thank everybody who attended our joint meeting on Friday. Paul was there, Richard was there, city attorney was there, all the representatives from the school district and the county. I think it was a great meeting, got a lot accomplished. And we're moving forward hopefully with proximity park. And that kind of transitions into what our city manager was talking about with the next steps regarding the splash pad and the pool replacement, because that'll certainly be a, you know, partnership that we'll certainly look forward to when we have those discussions coming up. So it was great to have those, those internal discussions, and I believe getting a lot worked out. So, thank you, Paul, thank you both. Is anything else right now that would come before us? If not, I'm going to make a motion to go in executive session for twenty-five minutes. That will include our city manager and our city attorney. We'll give you a speech for attorney-client privileges. I'll give you a couple of minutes to leave, and then we will reconvene here at five-fifteen. Is there a second?
Five-fifty?
Yeah.
Twenty-five minutes?
Oh, okay, all right.
Thank her, am I right or wrong? Is there a second? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Just testing.
Thank you.